Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the August 15, 2022 Southampton Village Planning Board Public Meeting and Public Hearing and Work Session. I'd like to get a motion to open the meeting, please.
Make a motion to open the meeting?
Second. Okay, great. So. All righty, let's just jump right in. We have nothing on the public hearing agenda. We have nothing on the work session agenda. Well, right, it's a pre-submission? Do I have the wrong agenda?
No, we have, our remaining agenda is the work session agenda. That's just what I was doing.
Oh, gotcha, okay.
So we have, I think we should just go through and call out everything, even those are adjourned.
Okay, first one is 5554 Hill Street. That is already, has already been adjourned to September 19. And then we have a request from 1 Pound Lake Pond Lane to adjourn to September 19. I'd like to propose that we do adjourn that to September 19.
Second?
On paper?
Aye.
That brings us to part of the Hamptons, 44 Meeting House Lane. And I want to thank everybody for, in my absence two weeks ago, getting this great list of conditions together. I read it and everything I had on my mind is included in here. So unless there's any objections from the rest of the board, I'd like to vote on this. Everybody prepared? So, I'd like to move that we vote to approve the application for 44 Meeting House Lane, part of the Hamptons, as proposed in this resolution with the conditions as outlined. Do we bring those in, or is that?
No, I mean, we went through them one by one at the last meeting, so we have that in the record. But if you just want to state that it's the site plan approval and Planning Board Case Number 2180.
Wait, can I get a second on that?
I'll, I'll second.
I think Antonia has to call this, right?
That would be great.
Okay, Ms. Dell, how do you vote?
Aye.
Ms. Claire, how do you vote?
Aye.
Chair, how do you vote?
Aye.
And Ms. Bernstein, how do you vote?
Aye.
Just for the record, I did speak to Mr. McFarland about this a couple of weeks ago. And even though he's not here tonight, he did indicate to me verbally that he was in favor of the application. So we have a forum anyway, but congratulations. Move forward.
You have the one I put over there that says "original" on it?
I do.
Okay, great.
Okay, next on our agenda is 71 Hill Street LLC. Public hearing is closed. I think we're still waiting for, like, you've moved on to zoning? Zoning board?
We haven't, we haven't, we're moving on to zoning.
Okay.
Yeah. I don't think that precludes you from, let me get in front of the microphone.
Sorry.
We are going to zoning board, of course we need that. But I don't think that precludes you from adopting a conditional resolution like this one.
Okay. Alex, are we ready for that?
Well, I'm gonna defer to Kathy on that one.
Yeah, yeah, so we, I mean, there's a number of conditions that we would want to work on before that. And we just, we need some time to put those together. So I would think for the next meeting, we could have those conditions for discussion.
Okay.
And maybe even a draft resolution, depending on how complicated it is.
Okay.
We'll try.
I'll put it on my calendar.
Next meeting.
Next meeting for discussion of the conditions, yeah.
Thank you. Thanks, Lyndon.
Okay, that brings us to pre-submission conference with 865 Merrick Holdings LLC, 22 Windmill.
Hi, I'm David Silverstein, I'm the principal, also the owner of 22 Windmill Lane. So I'd like to present my plans for the addition, preservation, and adaptive reuse of that property. I know it's kicked around in the village for some time. I think I'm the third one at it, at that point with this. So in the core of the lot, it is the Henry Rhodes House, which is circa 1760. And around that, that house was moved to Windmill Lane to make room for the new village wall, which is the old village wall at the corner of Hampton Road and Main Street, which is now Phillips Gallery. And that house was moved to that lot, preparations done. So starting with the overall content plan, our idea is to expose the 1760 Rhodes House in the western south elevations, which are visible, the visible street views, while demolishing the 21st century additions that have been built around it and replacing with a new structure on the lot, which is designed to complement the existing streetscape.
Do you want to put this up so if anybody does see the view, they can see what you're talking about? Or?
It would be great to get something on the table that Kathy could pick up.
Sorry to interrupt, I just, I just thought visuals really help.
Yeah, I apologize for not having the right, mine is actually smaller than yours.
Or does Alex have it?
We have Alex.
We can, this is taken off, I got it. I'll do it, Alex. What facing is that?
So that would be looking north. So if you were on Windmill Lane, turning from Jagger Lane, that would be, you know, north, looking north of Windmill. But that's taking a little bit from the easement roadway that runs alongside the building.
Just to be clear, so that faces Windmill Lane?
That, no, that, that's the view going up Windmill Lane, that's, that's the south elevation of the building.
So what we're seeing on the left side would be the front of the building. That's, that would be restored to the original historic house.
The south elevation.
Do you happen to know how wide that, that commercial structure that was added is? I mean, it's gonna create a much wider sidewalk in front, is that the intent?
The proposal is actually to remove the addition that's still playing the sidewalk, so yes, the sidewalk would be wider. Right now, the Rhodes House is built on all four sides, which is actually kind of the best thing for it. Because the extensions of it are rotting away, and it's actually preserving the house it's in the building. So it's, other than the roof leaking, I think it's worked out pretty well in that structure. But the only addition we would be putting back, as far as the Rhodes House is concerned, is on the north side, which is between 32 Windmill and the Rhodes House. And then obviously down, down that easement. So I'd say about three quarters of the, of the existing one would be exposed. Where none of it is exposed now.
I'm still having a hard time understanding this.
I think the site plan.
Yeah, look on page two.
I see, I'm on this. So Locarets is across the street?
Yes.
Okay, so this is a little, the, this is a little deceiving. I mean, not deceiving in a bad way, but from what, this front page looks like this is what we'll see from the road, but it really isn't.
So this, this would, this would be right.
Yeah. I mean, just a little bit of advice, the public, I wouldn't, I think that there needs to be a better rendering done, because I immediately thought that this was what I was gonna be seeing.
From the street.
From the street.
I can provide a rendering of the Windmill streetscape. My interest in showing this particular rendering is not so much to show the historic house. It's gonna be a salt box, and we're happy to show that. But more to show what's going on along Windmill, which is really the proposed building.
Yep, understood.
That was made at it.
Okay.
So the proposal would be to, for the, for the new part of the building is a medical use, medical office use, which I understand to be conforming in the village, village district as a, as a right use. And I think that's a net positive, based on the growing population of Southampton. The hospital out in the village of Southampton. You know, it's not a lot, it's eight medical suites or eight medical offices, but I think it'll be helpful regardless. So again, from Windmill Lane, the, there'll be full exposure of the restored Rhodes House. The idea is street-level retail open to the public. And again, the restoration inside, there's some elements that have survived that we, we'd like to preserve.
So it's medical and retail? The front building will be retail?
The, the, the first floor of the Rhodes House, which is maybe 600 or 800 square feet, would, would be walk-in retail.
Okay.
So, you know, ideally, it would be maybe able to take out carry, like a big shop, you know, type situation. And then to the north would be the corridor to access the medical retail, the medical suites. And also the medical suites are accessible from the park.
So the medical suites are actually behind?
Yes, yes.
And when you have them facing this way now, how much of them would you see from Windmill? Not, none at all, or?
Look at it like this. Had, you would just sort of see this front, but then they actually sort of can see.
And then they get bigger, okay, so you would just see.
They get smaller as you go back.
Right, you would just see a very small portion of it.
Yeah, just smaller.
Okay, okay. I guess my main concern was, I got a little apprehensive, because I know that that's a very old home, and I would think that you would want to lose some of those beautiful features that are in that old home. But that's what you would be doing to the retail?
Yeah, absolutely.
Okay, okay. I know, it's definitely confusing.
So.
Sorry.
You know, what they had done over the past hundred years or so, they built kind of these hodgepodge extensions on them. So we're basically taking those down, doing one extension that makes sense. But in doing that, exposing the Rhodes House.
Right, because you, you are not even allowed to change so much of it, isn't that correct? Because it's a historical home?
I don't believe this is in the historic district, ironically enough. But it's neither here nor there, my interest.
Okay, okay, I thought it was historical, I thought that was one of the reasons why it was held up so many times.
No, that's, it's, it's held up over sanitary use.
Okay, okay.
So as far as the sanitary use, my understanding, like that one, which is, like this, is, it's sacrilegious to protect that lake and try to get the nitrogen flow out of it. So we're already speaking to the Southern County Department of Health Services about a new low nitrogen system that would be in place until, you know, if the sewer system comes in.
Sorry. I would suggest making an application to the Architectural Review Board sooner rather than later. In fact, once you make a full site plan application, I would suggest submitting simultaneously to the ARB, because they, they will certainly have jurisdiction, and, you know, they may have comments that affect your site plan.
Right, it was, you know, it was just my thought that, that the Site Plan Board hates it, there's no sense in going to the ARB.
Oh, absolutely, absolutely.
You don't hate it all the way.
Again, you know, my own question is the medical use. I wouldn't know, do we need that in our village?
I don't know if we need it in our village. I would be concerned about parking medical, because that's a big turnover.
Again, there's, there's parking codes, there's parking requirements, we can, we can discuss. Medical is an as-of-right use, it's the highest and best use for this, this property. Ideally, I would, I would rather have made it work force housing, because it is, the existing building is residential. But that runs us into problems with the Health Department with the density. So the next use from there that makes sense would be medical slash office.
Although we are coming up on the comprehensive master plan being discussed. And that's one of the things that they really want to do, is sort of change that. So that may not be that far off.
Change, I'm sorry.
Work, change, I don't want to say work force housing or affordable housing. I just want to say they want to change some of the structure of our village, that's all I'm saying.
Yeah, and, and when, when I first purchased this property, I proposed that to Mayor Warren, and everybody was very enthusiastic about it. But as I submitted those plans to the Health Department without a sewer, it just simply won't happen.
Right, yeah.
Unless there's some hole somewhere else, but I'm learning that's not the case.
So would the medical offices, they're all associated with one hospital or practice? Or would just be individual doctors?
Oh, I mean, ideally, it would be something with Stony Brook.
Right.
But I can't say right now that there would be a taker.
When, when is the hospital scheduled to?
So their plan started in 19 to go to the other site, the University of St.
Yeah, that's what I heard, great.
Yeah, so I don't know where they're, they're at with that, but as I understand it, it's imminent that they're, that they're leaving.
Okay.
I don't know dates.
Okay. So you said something earlier about an easement, something, and then you said "obviously", but I didn't know what you were talking about, so it wasn't so obvious. You said something about from the, from the easement.
You can see it on the site plan?
Oh, I'm sorry, yes, okay, so the, so going south on Windmill Lane, if you made the left between 22 Windmill and the building to the south, there's a private access road.
Okay.
Which is a granted easement pipe. So Shippies, Rotations, 22 Windmill, and the Nell's Lot are, were all one property at one point. And somebody had subdivided it over the years, you know, into four properties. So there's a lot of kind of screwy access stuff. So that, that road, that right of way is one.
Okay.
So it's a private, it's a private road essentially.
So how did you come up with the medical?
You get into the parking lot, sorry.
Oh, no, sorry, no, you go ahead.
No, I was just gonna say, that's a private road going by?
It, it connects Windmill Lane to Village Parkway behind.
Right, to the left of Shippies?
No, no, the other side.
Yeah, the one to the left of Shippies, I'm not sure, I think that is a village, that is a village road.
Yes.
But, but the one south of 22 Windmill is a private road.
So the one by what, what was Job's Lane Jewelers, the old, the other old house that was moved there? That other old house was moved?
Which one? To the south.
Yeah, the house to the south of that property, that house has also moved to the village. Between that house and.
When you make your application, if you could submit a copy of the easement, that's helpful.
Sure.
And can you talk about the parking that would be necessary for this?
Yes, so there's two things, so there's the, you know, there's the as-of-right parking from the existing use, which I don't have the calculations in program. I believe we'll, we'll need 12 spots. And we have, we have room for 10, so we would have to purchase spots in the, in the building, two spots for the village.
And is that also including the retail in the front? Would be 12?
Yes.
Eight, eight offices?
Yeah, they're very small spaces.
No, but I'm still saying, just.
Yeah, again, I.
Just asking, just asking.
I, my answer should be, I don't have the parking calculations, so.
No, but I meant the eight, just asking about the eight.
Do they have individual entrances, or is it one, it looks like four separate buildings, or, okay?
So there'll be a common vestibule between Rotations and 22 Windmill. And, and that'll be two, that'll be two common corridors for egress, front to back.
Okay.
And they'll be, from the parking, they'll be walked into the front of the suites as well. The ground suites, the second floor suites would need to be, the vestibule.
Okay, and that, you may have gone over this, but the genesis of the doctor's office idea was, is it, that we think that we need more doctors' offices after the hospital leaves?
I do.
Like, did they approach, or they think Stony Brook wants maybe?
Well, a couple of things, so my, my mother, who lives in the village of Southampton, is blind and can't get around. We do go to Stony Brook, and we go to Stony Brook facilities, which are all full. And there's, they're really, to the best of my knowledge, there is no treatment in, of any sort within the village, within the village center. And quite simply, it's the highest and best use of the property.
So on asking one, I just see open parking area. Is that where the hall spaces would be?
Yes.
You might want to also speak with the fire marshal, the village fire marshal, to talk about, you know, access now for emergency vehicles, and whether a fire lane would be required. And in that case, you might be further restricted with the parking spaces than you think people would be. That they need to get in the back there, I'm not sure they will, but you want to talk to him.
So the 12-foot right of way is to the south of these parking?
Yes.
Okay, eventually this wall be, is it on the site plan?
Yeah, it's shown on the site plan.
I'm not super clear, we both.
Right, right, that the access for the parking really is through the easement, right? And how do you get in there, and, you know, where you would actually park?
And then, and then how do you get to these office suites? Would there be, you know, I'm just, things that you could add to the plan? Some sort of pathway or something? Could, because I'm just wondering, if you, if you've got 12 cars parked in here, are people gonna have to walk to the back of cars to get into these individual suites? Or would there be some sort of a sidewalk that runs across the?
Well, again, this is secondary access, the, the main access is from 22 Windmill Lane.
So you would need to walk to the front of the street to, to access?
Or to the back of the building.
But then, where would you walk? If you parked here?
Understood.
And I would consider, you know, showing the ADA accessible route, accessible spaces. Do you know where the existing cemetery, whatever, pool, is there, is there a tank, or it might be a brick?
I was just gonna say, it's probably a hole in the ground of bricks.
No, there's a sanitary system there, it's not ready, proper one doesn't exist.
Does it show up on the survey, I don't see it.
So if you, if you see on C001.
Yep.
There's a couple of covers that are shown here in the vandal. It's, it's in that section of the lot.
Okay.
And we do have a map of the existing.
Okay, yeah, we would want a, as of survey. Obviously, the Health Department will oversee the abandonment of the system.
We've already filed for it.
You have, okay.
I'd, I'd just like to make the suggestion too, that possibly the addition could look more like a salt box, to just kind of.
None of the building's historic.
Pardon me?
If the build, if, if the main building is historic, then the addition has to be reversible, and it's not supposed to mimic the architecture of the historic structure.
Through, through that, is this building going to be landmine?
Uh, no.
So you just wanted to keep it? Maybe, yeah.
I like, I, I like the, I like the.
Yeah.
Old buildings.
I kind of like the.
Yeah, I liked it.
I like the marriage of something a little more modern, with, like they do on college campuses.
Like the one on, on Hampton Road? It's mancered and has glass in the back?
Did you have something to add, Alex?
Yeah, I did, if I could, I just wanted to clarify for the board that this property does fall outside of the historic district. However, we do have a historic inventory form for it, noting its history. And I just wanted to ask if you could clarify, yeah, there's a large existing tree adjacent to the building. Just wanna, it looks like that's going to be preserved. Maybe you could talk about what's happening on that adjacent terrace space.
And, and Alex, what year was the building constructed?
Um, let's see.
If you know, sorry.
1890s is what the inventory form.
So it couldn't be demolished as of right, you can't.
Sorry, you could not?
You could not demolish as of right.
Yeah, I'm, I'm not here for marketing.
Yeah. I just wanted to be clear with the board.
I thought you had said 1780 something.
It says the building dates, from the research that's been done, dates back to 1760.
1760.
That's when it was moved, according to the form, it was moved in the.
Oh, that's when it was moved, okay.
Yeah, that's.
Got it, got it, okay.
And it was originally built about 1740, according to our inventory form.
Wow. Very cool.
And where is it moved from, if you know, if you know, don't worry about it.
What it says on our form is that it was the northeast corner of Main Street and Hampton Road.
Where Phillips is.
Wow.
Oh, right, you had said that, yes, thank you, thank you, it's just a lot.
Yeah, so by 1900, they were already seconded and moving around.
Yeah, yeah.
So you're putting in an IA system, like a self-contained, is that the idea?
Yes.
Yeah, okay, and the nitrogen, just, would you explain to me how that works, your?
Maybe it is.
No.
Well, I can, I can.
Putting nitrogen back, does that go from the contained IA system?
It doesn't really, I mean, by the time the AI system is done with it, the nitrogen isn't in it.
Okay.
It's, it's sort of like a digestion system, in a way.
Okay.
So it really, they say it's almost water by the time it goes through the system.
Yeah, they call it a de-nitrification system, so, but you asked how, how it worked, and there was no way I was gonna be able to. Oh, how about where is it, do we know where it is, where is it gonna be?
No, thanks.
It's on the preliminary site plan.
Okay.
So this is, what I'm told, is a geomat system. And one of the other challenges with the site is the high groundwater. So if you look at the preliminary site plan.
Yeah.
It's called the, the southwest portion, and you have those longer triangular structures. And then that pipes to some detention behind the building.
So the geomat system, just so you know, it brings all of that sort of treated liquid to the surface, so that plant material can kind of use it and not, and eventually, I mean, but the idea is that it doesn't make its way into the water table, it's brought up, actually up to the surface.
Right, and it's over here, it's, right?
Well, it's pumped from there.
But it's, yeah, but that's where it's located on the property.
These new systems rely on electricity to do their job, because there's an aerification portion of it, and.
Okay.
Regarding, regarding the tree, I know that there, there's a tree on the property, it's not, it's not in the way of anything we're trying to do. But it is growing most likely under the foundations. And I'm guessing when we get into this, we will have to lift that, that home and put a new foundation under it. I don't know how that will affect the tree.
I don't think it would survive this plan.
Yeah, but it, from our perspective, it's not in the way of, of the overall plan.
Just to put in those geomat systems, is gonna disturb the root zone enough, or think the tree would suffer?
I don't think, I don't think the tree is as old as the, as old. Tree looks to be about 100 years old or so.
Do you know what it is? Because if it's a, if it's a Norway maple, that's sort of an invasive exotic anyway, maybe you could plant.
It'll last, it won't last any more than under 20 years anyway.
Right, maybe you could plant a native tree in its place.
Oh, I'd be happy to.
Nice oak. Okay.
Is, if you can make sure that that tree is shown on the actual survey, rather than an approximate location, so we can see how that works with the geomat system also?
Looks like Alex put it up.
Oh, there it is.
Well, that's.
Can you tell on it?
I could if I got it on the screen.
This is on, this is on Reservation Long Island's website. Lake has mimosa-type leaves, or?
No.
See, it's like, it's a lot of little limbs coming along.
You know what, I think it's, uh, I think. You know what, I think it's, I think it's honey locusts.
Oh, locust, right. Has the same kind of leaves, yeah.
Oh, I'll get a professional to do that.
It looks a lot closer to...
Oh, you want?
Yeah, he is, he is.
Right, which is not one.
Yes.
So what's the determination?
Well, I would, I'll go look at it, but I just don't think it's going to survive. It might survive and then within a couple of years perish, so I think, I mean, as much as I hate to see it go, just as long as you put another one in its place.
That's, that's absolutely fine.
You'd have to have such a large site protection fence around it that I don't think you'd be able to operate on the site.
It sort of looks like it's growing right up next to the...
Yeah, that's why I think it might be a Norway maple that just sort of seeded itself there a long time ago. I'll take a look.
Okay, so we covered parking, ADA accessibility, sanitary system, use, we'll have to look at the use table, of course, but I haven't checked recently, so we'll check that. And actually, I mean, if there, if it says medical office and it actually converted to an office in the future, that would be less waste as far as the, you know, the density goes.
As long as the medical offices aren't dumping the way that cancer...
No, no, they don't do that. They pick everything up now.
Okay.
Even the things that you think that they don't really need to, like, you know, tissue.
All right, I don't know of this.
Yeah, no, no, they're very, they're very careful about that.
If it was developed as medical offices but in a turn, run into rent, what are they? Can that happen or does it...
Well, you determined it.
I guess I'm asking the office.
I don't see why not.
Okay, just as long as it's some sort of a professional office.
I mean, we'd have to take a look because we haven't evaluated this yet, but I don't, I don't see why not. You know, when you're talking highest and best, you're just talking about how much rent can you get?
Yeah.
An attorney is not going to pay as much as a doctor.
Understood.
They'd be charging.
Uh-uh.
Any other questions?
I don't think so.
Thank you for keeping me open. We're not trying to, we're not trying to get rid of it.
No, it's special. There's many, many details in there that are remarkably well-preserved. Probably from the fact that the building is, you know, just get open and, you know, can flow air. There was, there was no climate, no real climate control in seventeen thirty, so that's how they built it.
Okay.
What are the second and third floors going to be used for?
So the second floor, well, there's no third floor, just a two-story building. But the second floor would just be accessory use to the first floor, so that's in the retail, and it would be the other four medical suites over the formal level.
No way to get in an apartment there because of sewer?
Yeah, I mean, it's probably four or five times the sanitary flow of this use. I mean, that's what we had originally kind of hoped for. There actually is an approved plan of this as apartments already, but the hurdle is just, the hurdle is really bothering with the Health Department. And, you know, unfortunately, I don't think this building is going to stay around long enough to see the sewer, you know, if it's not, there's nothing to do with sewer.
I'm just, I just want to go back to this, this rendering. I would, I would just hate for the press to get a hold of it and the public to automatically assume, because they will automatically assume that this is what it's going to look like from the road, so I would just be really careful with that.
Sure.
And maybe even the gazing balls in the front yard. I've just seen these things go where you're at a public hearing and somebody holds this up and says, "How can we let this happen on Windmill Lane?"
I do have, I do have a windmill elevation, which I can, I can submit, you know, to you guys after the fact. So at least we have that circulating as well. I'm not sure if there's a gazing ball, but I may be able to Photoshop.
Well...
Well, they could be historic gazing balls.
They could.
Yes, sir.
They could be Victorian-era gazing balls.
Captain Rhodes Anchor Ball, glad it's Anchor Ball.
No, but seriously, we've seen it happen where just people assume that this is a street view and...
And it becomes a mini mall.
Right.
We're not doing mini malls.
It looks like a hotel. We've heard it all. I, what do you think? Any other?
I'm just glad it's going to be something and preserved as much as so...
Yeah. It's exciting that that's going to get cleaned up.
Thank you very much.
Yeah.
Thank you. One more thing about the parking. On drawing C two, it does show it as being a medical office on the first floor for the historic home part, so that needs to be corrected, I guess, for retail, if that's the intent.
Okay, sure.
And then make sure you consider the upstairs space when you do the calculations for the parking. You don't want to end up having too little and then that space being restricted if it's, it's going to be used for anything.
And then the plan for kind of numbering the buildings or signage or whatever, that's just my own experience with medical offices, is like, never know where, where they are. If one's on the second floor, like what building to go to, so are there plans to, that may be too down the road, but to like eliminate confusion with numbering the buildings or signage or whatever?
Absolutely.
Yeah. Because otherwise, people drive around.
Yeah, it'll be a little clearer when I submit the, I guess that would be the Westerley elevation, what that vestibule looks like.
Yeah.
And that would be more...
Yeah, how people get directed to where they want it to be.
I think, I think we're good. Thank you.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I didn't get any of those.
Pardon?
I didn't get that.
You didn't get a site plan?
I only have the dispatch that you have.
I think it's just a color copy.
Oh, no, I'm just saying, does Alan have, does Alan have it over there? Actually, let's close the meeting before he...
It's just a colorized version of this. Actually, I think it's the official...
No, I'm saying I don't even have one of these.
Oh, you don't?
I was looking over your shoulder because I don't have my hands, I don't know. Okay, thank you.
Okay.
You've already done that.
Yeah, Jackie said she couldn't find it in minutes, so it doesn't hurt to vote on it again.
Okay, I'd like to propose that we change the September fifth meeting to Tuesday, September sixth, being that September fifth is Labor Day.
I'll second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. No minutes on here, that's okay. Alan's not here. Yeah, I guess we're ready to close. Okay. I'd like to move it to close this meeting, please.
I'll second that.
All in favor?
Aye.